Good morning. Wait, wait, wait.
I take it twenty-five.
Wait, wait, don't tell me.
Yeah, he did.
Good morning. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting. If you can, please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn the next part of the meeting over to Supervisor Edson. We have a resolution before us approving the San Andreas Recreation and Park District request to rename the San Andreas Community Park to Alex Jr. Quinones Community Ballpark. Edson Board Action. Thought that was all. Thank you, Mr. Edson.
Thanks.
Did you want to make the motion, Mr. Edson?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we accept this resolution.
A second. Motion by Supervisor Edson, a second by Supervisor Ponte. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move.
So, this is the second time I get to do this this year, so I'm really excited about actually doing this one. So, if I have, Eric, can you plug there, please? So, I had a real pleasure of working with Eric. When I first ran Recreation Parks and Parks, he was in, so, the board, the board decided to honor him and his family with renaming of the what is now called San Andreas Community Parks to Alex Jr. Quinones Community Park. And so, I like to read this resolution. So, resolution approving the San Andreas Recreation and Park District to rename the San Andreas Community Parks to Alex Jr. Quinones Community Park. Whereas the County of Calveras owns the San Andreas Community Park, and whereas the County of Calveras leases the San Andreas Recreation and Park District. And whereas Alex Jr. Quinones was instrumental in building the park, installing the electrical system, and maintaining the park over thirty years. Whereas on February 24th, 2013, the San Andreas Recreation and Parks District voted unanimously to request that the Board of Supervisors of Calveras County rename the San Andreas Community Park to the Alex Jr. Quinones Community Park. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors approve the request from the San Andreas Recreation and Parks District to rename the San Andreas Community Park to the Alex Jr. Quinones Community Park. Passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calveras, State of California, this 26th day of November, 2013. So, throughout the time I've been here, I've worked with some, quite a few volunteers. And there's a lot of good volunteers in our county, thank God, because that's what keeps us going. And Alex, Alex passed away earlier this year, and I worked with him, and he actually drove me to do the work part. He was a driver, just no doubt about that. He got taste of that. And so, and of course, the San Andreas Recreation and Parks District recognized that. And so, here we are. It's not often that we get to be able to have this honor of naming a park after our person in our community. And I am just really very honored and humbled to know Alex, and I kind of have to give him this.
I'm glad he's there, please. Get off my husband. And he was here when he could say mission accomplished, because his goal was to make a difference. He just really got past it. Thank you.
I just, I just.
I'm sorry.
I just worked with Alex for many years on the Murphy's Friends Christmas dinner. He was very involved. When I became involved, he was there. And I really thank you for sharing him with us. It was, I mean, he was just an integral part of the Christmas dinner at the Native Sons and wherever before that. So, thank you.
I completely supported him 100%. This is special to him.
Yes, thank you.
So, at 12 o'clock, are we gonna make your way?
Eleven forty-five. If we haven't finished the meeting, we are breaking at eleven forty-five to.
And we're gonna go to the entrance of the park, right by the red bar. And there is a sign that is gonna be unveiled at that point. So, I'd like to have as many people come there and be a part of this as possible. And then hopefully, Parks Recreation will be presenting that sign, because this is their deal, not mine, and this is doing the resolutions. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor. I'd like to move to the consent agenda. These items are normally routine and controversial. Non-controversial. They are controversial. There'll be five minutes per person. We'll go for thirty minutes. If anyone has an item, any member of the board have a consent agenda item they'd like to pull? Oh, I'm sorry, Bonnie. I said, what's Bonnie gonna say? He asked if we were gonna skip public comment. Yeah, I was gonna skip public comment. I thought I'd try a new, something new, but my apologies to the public. We'll go to public comment.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. Last meeting, there was some question about the funding for IHSS. And I have this little bubble graph here that specifies where the funding, the majority of the funding comes from IHSS. It's a formula from federal, state, and county funding. And historically, it used to be this. When we had the stimulus money, the formula changed a little bit, and the county got to pay less. And now supposedly with the Obamacare and the first choice monies, this formula may change again, but this is sorta like what it is. And it funds all of these other bubbles that have money in it, except for the IHSS Advisory Committee, which the county doesn't fund any money into that program now. But the monies that we were talking about for the healthcare come from federal, state, and county monies, and I circled it in the black and blue one here. And it's approximately $184,000 a year that you contribute about maybe 15%, maybe 17% of. But you can see, you contribute a lot to a lot of these programs. Look down here in the bottom left-hand corner. Our wages are over $2.5 million a year to pay for home care in Calveras County, and you guys pay for maybe 17% of it. So, you got a big stake in this. And this money over here for the healthcare insurance, the $184,000, it's been pointed out to you before, and you've seen it. And if you want to turn the page, it has showed up in this budget right here where the orange line is. Well, $185,000, $184,000, pretty darn close. And that's money that shows up in this other program's budget, but it really has nothing to do with their budget. In fact, these other two categories in yellow have nothing to do with this budget, but are always included in this budget. And that's where you've seen our healthcare benefits before. So, you contribute to them not a lot in comparison to what the federal and state does, but that's where that money comes from. And it comes from every hour that we work, and we work about 250,000 hours a year, you pay 60 cents for every hour is put in a pocket of money, and that's what the black and blue bubble is. So, that's where the money goes, folks, and that's where it comes from. Do you all have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Peter Race, General. I got some good news for the good folks. Something called the Ring of Fires. We don't have to worry about flooding in the ocean, because there's ten more new islands in the South Pacific. So, you don't have to worry about going to the beach. You're not gonna be washed over. It's not gonna raise three millimeters, three centimeters in the next couple of years. Also, because of a great amount of ice and snow on the North Pole and the South Pole, which is in the same world, the same global area, it's getting new record ice. Matter of fact, some people are praying for some global warming, especially on the Midwest and on the East Coast this weekend. So, we gotta be safe for a couple of days. The next thing I would like to see is, I want to thank the board, whoever arranged that about the healthcare presentation we had over here. And hopefully, maybe we can get some, right now, we're under the individual mandates, and I could use a nice adjective, but there's ladies here, so I won't say anything, but that's kinda of a cluster something. But that's gonna affect business entities in a couple of months. And employees, not necessarily in the government, but a lot of business owners gonna be affected. Also, I mentioned already somebody. The unemployment's gonna be running out the end of this year. That's gonna affect a few people. And this year, we're not gonna have to spend $150,000 of advertising for welfare and food stamps. I believe that's what we did a couple of months ago, a year ago, that we spent $150,000 to advertise so people come in, take advantage of the food stamps, because they're gonna be coming. Hopefully, that you can consider that, what a great amount of brain power we have on this board to get people to work. We need it, we use it, and it would be nice to know for something how, what you achieved. I mean, I see that a whole bunch of stuff for the welfare department we have down the street, but we never hear what they accomplished. Hopefully, then, instead of bragging about how many people we put on food stamps, welfare, pay their car bills, and give them free phones, I'd like to hear somebody brag about how many people were able to get off of that stuff. Because you're running out of payers. And it would be nice to hear what positive the Board of Supervisors accomplished. And I don't care if it's a grant, it still comes out of your taxpayers' money. The state doesn't have any money. You're kinda strapped, and you will be more strapped as the next year, you know it's coming. But it would be nice to put people to work, even if it's local, community issues. I don't care if it's a path to school, safe ways to school like we have in our district. It could have been done locally by volunteers, instead of waiting seven years, over seven years, to put some safety in Hagan Road and Highway 26. And we don't even go into it, why is that mess there? It was your planning department, your public works that designed it and approved that supervisors. We're in that position, if you go back far enough. Right now, the question is remedying it. It would be nice to do it. There's ways, it could've been done by volunteers on roads, and I do not personally, and I don't have grandkids to take school with them, I do not like the idea that there's an average of six incident, six incidents a year. And those morons from Caltrans, seven years, folks, they've been messing around. Seven years. And I'm sure you're all familiar with the second phase, because it had, something had to be done. Are you all familiar with what the second phase is? Have you seen the outline? We had to do something right then and there, even though it took a year of correspondence, over four, five feet of sidewalk on Highway 26. So, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Is there gonna be another meeting before Christmas?
Yes.
Good, good. I can wish you Merry Christmas then.
Thank you, Mr. Race. Does anyone else?
We don't have to worry about flooding anymore.
Does anyone else have any item they'd like to discuss? Not on the agenda. I'd like to move to the, sorry. Consent agenda, please. It better be less than thirty seconds.
It will be quick. Just for the public that's in attendance here, and maybe people that might watch this recording at home, I just wanna make sure that people are aware that the Board of Supervisors nor the County Public Works approved the General and School that is such a botched job that Mr. Race alluded to. I researched to find out why and who allowed that school to be built with only one ingress and egress, which is not safe per state code. We have no ability to have any oversight over that. That is the state architectural department or something like that, and that's who the schools report to. They are totally and 100% different entity. The county has no jurisdiction oversight on what schools do. Believe me, if we have the ability to have oversight on what the schools do in terms of some of the operations they run, we would be on their back. So, just FYI.
Thank you. I'll move to consent agenda. These are normally routine, not controversial. Does any member of the board have an item they would like to pull from consent? Any member of staff? Any member, oh, thirteen. I'm sorry, what? Okay, any other? Okay, may I have a motion on the balance?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Wright, second. By Supervisor Edson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so move. Thank you. Number seven, please.
Good morning. Bear with me on my voice, please. My name is Madeline Kurska, County Clerk Recorder, and the item before you to renew our contract with HOB, who is our recording system contractor to, for our recording system for the entire county. We are going to a month-by-month, and one of the reasons is what has just happened to us, experience to us from the power outage. And this is Robin Landville, and she's been the liaison, so to speak, of letting everybody know in the title, real estate, all the other county offices of our situation what actually happened, should not have happened. The server that we have is very old. We've been told by tech services for several years, and stuff up Robin, that we need to replace this. And our vendor has been, response was, unless you sign with us for a whole year, we're not going to replace it. Well, the horrible thing happened, because the server was old, and the power went mm, like that, and then pop. And we've been down for a total of 12 days. The most we should've been down is two to four hours. Any reliable vendor would've had us up and running with a new server. We didn't even get a new server. It's a used server. So, in the near future, like hopefully by January, we'll be presenting to you our RFP and the results of the RFP to get a new vendor, an upgraded vendor. We were told in October, this was as good as it gets. We have planned no upgrades for you. We have, and so therefore, the unthinkable happened. However, we rallied, and we were very systematically on everything that we took in each day, has to be in chronological order. The recorders had it dialed in perfectly. I was very proud of them and how the rest departments have worked to help us. We are now up. We have everything up as of Friday. We were able to do the title searches. That's the difficult part, is the title companies come in, are real estate, and they have no knowledge of any liens from when they're last got their statement, which was September, September 30th is when they got the last report, for up to November 12th. They had no idea of any liens that were placed, and that was the crucial part. As any of you know, that are in title companies or anything to do with real estate. We were able to function again. I give kudos to my entire staff and.
How did they get the information that?
They had to go manually through the documents that were recorded. So, they, instead of being there an hour, they were there three to four hours in the morning to record, so.
We were able to provide copies of first certificates on a limited basis, depending on what we had. Copies of, a lot of it is in the computer system. So, again, any vendor that I contacted, within two to four hours, they have something to you immediately. So, it was inexcusable not to even send the server until.
Just like two to three days before they sent the.
They sent the server, and it came by Pony Express or something. I'm not quite sure. It took several days to get here. Yeah. So, again, this all came out of Texas. Nothing against Texas, but we want a California-based system.
Well, I also credit the real estate and title companies. I mean, I didn't get any calls or hear.
Oh, good.
They were very, the ones I talked, were very understanding, weren't happy, but totally understanding of what occurred and what you were trying to accomplish.
We even have, the Recorder's Office from Toowoomba was very concerned, because they heard from the title runners, and they asked us what our system was to maintain a flow while we were down, and she even sent us flowers, because she knew how much under pressure we were with that. Fortunately or unfortunately, it's kind of a slow time in recording, which is another issue that was fortunate for us, that we didn't have the bulk of recording, and we hope that jumps up soon. But anyway, just to let you know, and we do impact the Assessor's Office, because they use our IRS system, the Surveyor, the Tax Collector. CCWD's been calling us, because they look to see if there's any liens against CCWD water liens or other liens. So, we are.
Thank you, Mr. Race.
Madeline, thank you, and thank you to the staff for carrying that, because I know you probably went back to a old-fashioned way of doing business and everything manually, and I know staffing is critical in your department. Can you tell me how long we've had this vendor?
Since the mid-'90s, '95 forward. Previous to that, that same, there was a lot of mergers that came with the company, and so possibly prior to '95 and '95 to when the mergers started happening. And basically, they just don't care. I've never even met any of our vendors. Don't even know who they are. They've never come out to visit. There's never been any personal calls. And that's, service is everything. You've gotta have that service.
So, would they, so they don't work with you at all, or talk to you? I mean, do they talk to tech services and staff?
We hear, well, we have to watch our timeframe. They do have somebody, because it's two hours time difference. So, if we ever have an issue, sometimes it's a while before they get back with us. David from HOB has been working with us over the phone quite a bit, and been very helpful. I think he knew that this shouldn't happen. You know, we've been warned by tech services. Hans has said, you gotta get a different server. And again, when they send us one, it's a used one, so.
So, contractually, is there anything there that we can go back and pursue? I mean, are they obligated to keep us up and going?
As far as the cost, they are eating the cost of that, but as far as any of our extra labor, I did approach Risk Management and HR about the situation, and she said, well, as long as they're willing to pay. But again, the cost of the labor, the intensity of now doing double.
And I would just add that this is one of the systems that we originally looked at. We were looking at Megabyte as a potential integrated system, decided not to go that route, but we are going to be looking at a standalone system, and there is independent funding for that system, so we will be looking to replace this. Just broader, though, like much of our infrastructure, we've been patching things together, and this is demonstration of what happens when those patches break.
Yes, we do collect a modernization fund, so we have adequate funding to fund it.
And that's what you're bringing back?
Not a new, I don't want to say that, but an approved system, updated system is better choice of words.
And that's what you'll bring back to us in January?
Yes, we're targeting January.
Yes, okay.
Right, Zachary? He's been helping us.
Does any member of the public have any questions on this item?
Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. I'm not sure if this relates to this, but we have Wi-Fi previously with the court systems, where we could go to the county site and review the board packages. It's been very helpful. But this morning, those have been wiped out, and instead, there's two sites for Board of Supervisors, but they require a password, and I don't know what that password is.
We can certainly make that password available. You are correct, there used to be a Wi-Fi system provided by the courts in this building. We're in the process of transitioning. Diane, do you know what the password is off the top of your head? We will, we will get that password to everyone before the next meeting, and I apologize.
Okay, that means a lot of people are gonna be dumb here to talk to you, because they haven't seen the backup package.
So, you're not gonna talk to us?
Well, if only I could say something intelligent.
But it's only here in this building, right?
It's in this room, that the, in this building. So, we're hoping that Janice may have the password. If Howard is listening and could make that password known and available to us, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other questions, may I have a motion on item seven?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Ponte.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so it goes. Thank you. Would like to move to item 13. Supervisor Edson.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Captain. So, I was reading the packet yesterday, and I noticed this item on here, and Cisco Foods is the vendor of choice at the current time. And so, you know, I just wanted to bring my expert opinion in on this. I've dealt with lots of vendors, lots of food vendors. Sometimes it only seems like there's one out there, because they're kinda dominant. And, but I can assure you that there's a lot, there's other good vendors out there, and I would, I would like to suggest that we actually, like Lori, Lori sent me an email and said, it would be a good idea to put it out for review, maybe give some estimates. And then I understand also that, you know, some stuff that's already been purchased, and that you need to follow through with that, and that's great. But in this day and age, we're looking for savings, and there is a potential for some pretty large savings.
I do not disagree. And one of the, you know, one of the things in the design of the new jail, have you been able to get up with the new kitchen yet?
Not yet.
And a lot of our other things that we're doing, we're gonna be going out to RFP to see if we can get a better deal. The new jail kitchen has two huge walk-in reefers and then a freezer, and the intent is, as we move forward, to go out to RFP to try to get the best bang for the buck, so we can, you know, fill those freezers for cheaper costs. So, that is our intent.
Let's just know that, you know, you could keep this money up really quickly with the wrong visitor.
It goes real quick. It absolutely does. But I'm sure, hopefully, sometime next year, I'll be before you with who we're recommending we go with.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? May I have a motion? Supervisor, did you want to give me a motion?
I can't, not on this one.
Well, this is for this coming budget year, and they also talked about they were gonna go out for bids for the 14, 15 budget year.
So, you know, I would, I would say that, okay, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor.
And also, before I leave, we're doing kitchen training today on all the new equipment, so.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Supervisor Ponte, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moves.
Excuse me.
Still the regular agenda. Item 15, introduce and waive reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 2.52 of the Calaveras County Advisory Committee to clarify titles due these powers and other issues related to the commission. Counsel, are you taking this, or Supervisor Ponte?
So I'll take this, and-
Thank you.
And as you're aware, this is the culmination of several months of meeting with the Fish and Game Commission at the Board's direction to review their status, and the ordinance is proposed to amend the issues that are addressed in the staff report, and if you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer that for you.
I would just like to reaffirm what Janice has said and is doing, and certainly appreciate it, because I feel this will just overall make a stronger commission in defining their roles and responsibilities, and be able to move forward and such. For your time doing so.
My question I had, and I didn't know if it would be going into the ordinance, or would go into the bylaws of the commission, but the terms, that's always a controversial issue when you want to get rid of a commissioner, and it's always, as you're talking about volunteers, and if you set up processes ahead of time, and everybody knows the rules, then it becomes easier.
My goal was to take as much out of ordinances as possible, because there's costs associated with amending ordinances, so that will be in the resolution, that will come back to the board, and it's also currently in the draft of the bylaws that I put together for them, that they're reviewing.
Okay.
And their goal with that is to alternate terms too, so that it's not a fresh commission every two years or one year, that there's staggering terms, and that terms are generally wanting to be established in two-year timeframes.
That's individually consented to your stagger.
I don't remember how that started. Okay. Did you want to make any other comments? Are there any comments from the public on this item? Supervisor Ponte, did you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve to introduce and waive the ordinance.
Motion by Supervisor Ponte, second by Supervisor Edson, to introduce and waive reading of the ordinance for the Fish and Game Advisory Committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so move, thank you. Item 16, resolution adopting the initial study mitigation negative deck mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the railroad flat road bridge replacement project. Mr. Garcia?
I make a motion to approve.
I open for discussion, do any members of the board have any comments? Any member of the public have any comments on this item? I have a motion by Supervisor Wright, a second by Supervisor Edson, all in favor? Aye, opposed, so goes railroad flat, thank you. Mr. Garcia, don't go away. We have item 17, First Amendment to the Professional Service Agreement between the county and PSOMA, how do you, how do they say that?
SOMAS.
SOMAS.
The PSOMA.
The asylum, associated with the mountain ranch turnout safety improvement. Did you want to, pretty self-explanatory, but is there any comments that you want to make on this?
We're coming back to the board after making some modifications to the staff report, identifying a logical terminology to the project. This amendment will allow us to complete those tasks that we were mandated to do under the state, and work well, work in cooperation with the tribe, the Miwok tribe. Once those items are completed, we can reassess the project and determine whether or not we wish to move forward on it.
Are there any comments or questions from the board on this item? Any comments from the public on this item? There'll be a motion, please?
I make a move to approve.
Motion by Supervisor Wright, a second-
A second.
By Supervisor Ponte, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move, oh, opposed, so move, thank you. The next item is introduce waive reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 1504 Uniform Codes of the Calaveras County Code to adopt by reference the 2013 California Building Code. Pretty straightforward, Mr. White.
I make a motion.
I asked to maybe make a comment.
Good morning.
This is going to come back to us for a public hearing? Do I understand that correctly?
I guess if that's what we have to do.
Say yes.
I'm going to say yes. See, we do this every three years, and I can't remember what we did three years ago.
The supervisors, the board, and notice public hearing on the adoption of the code by reference after the first board hearing, where the ordinance is introduced and the title's read, but we're waiving reading. I sent you-
An email on the, a question about the code books?
Yes.
The funding, the funding for the code books, we have that in our approved budget for the purchase of the code books. So we will inherit the new code after January 1st.
Well, there'll be a public hearing, so we can look at that, I wanted Mr. White to explain if there are any key changes, doesn't matter what we think, this is adopted for all counties and the state.
That's correct.
So, even if we don't do anything, these are the rules that we have to abide by.
That's correct.
So when we come back for that public hearing, will there be an explanation of maybe some of the changes, or the changes that have been made?
The, I can explain the process, the, and I'll give you a brief overview of what that is, built, every three years, the code changes, and the Building Standards Commission approves the IRC version, and then it's amended to the California amendment, which are, I believe, 13 different titles of the codes. So, the changes in all the codes are rather, may or may not be all that involved, it takes a while to sit there and go through each code book to see what those specific changes are. If you decide that you want to change anything locally, to, you have to file that with the Building Standards Commission, only on building standards issues, for example, how many bars of steel you put in the foundation, or nails in plywood, and that sort of thing, we're not doing that, so we don't need to file any standards changes, we're accepting the code as is. The only thing we're proposing at this point in time, which does not need to go to the Building Standards Commission, it just needs to be approved through the board action, is the amendments to administrative parts of the code, and we've cleaned up some of the confusing language in the actual county code itself, to where it makes a little more sense, and it's easier to follow, so there are some changes to that particular document.
So Jeff, some of the things going on in our neighboring county, Amador County, have you been following what they've been doing over there?
Specific to anything that you can bring up?
Well, they're talking about some pretty significant changes, you know, kind of allowing more local control of the building codes, more flexibility, similar to what Mendocino did a long time ago, also using, you know, like I discussed with you before, using your own lumber to be able to use that to code for structural.
The, in speaking to the actual, the use of lumber, milled lumber on your site, structural or decorative, whatever you want to use it for, if it's going to be used for a structural construction, the lumber needs to be graded, and it's a process that the code recognizes that if you want to harvest timber on your land, then by species and by grading, it can be structurally graded for that use, and that's been in the code as long as I can remember, so there's-
What's difficult to be run into is the grading aspect of that, there's really, there's, there's not a lot of, that's not easy to do, from the conversations I've had with contractors, constituents.
What has to happen is a certified, somebody who is certified at grading lumber comes out and looks at the lumber and stamps it, and grades it for its select struck versus whatever, and the species also is important, because pine does not have the same strength that Douglas fir does, and that sort of thing, so.
I understand, but what I want is opening up with that, some flexibility, make it easier for people to actually utilize their, our, you know, their resources, and as a county, especially district two, our natural resources easier, and so that's why I'm looking to, to change that, to make it easier for people to use their own lumber. Of course, we don't want, you know, them not to be structurally sound, but I think there's a process that we can speed up and make more convenient and user-friendly to help business, and people use their own wood on their own property, while at the same time providing for public safety. In Amador, they have a huge, I mean, I don't want to go exactly where Amador's going, but, but I do, I do think, I'd like to start with looking at, at least being able to use your own trees to build your own house.
Well, that is something that we have done in the past, it is, it's, from time to time over the last 20, 30 years, somebody would want to use lumber that they have harvested off of their own property, and it's, and this process is, they get it approved through a lumber grader, and it shows up on their plans that they're using. But the code does require that it has to be specified for grading.
But, but I think we have some flexibility in how we as the local agency determine how that process works.
Well, we can certainly look into see what we're required to do, and all of the requirements.
So, so this, and this would, we'd have to basically decide as a board to do this, and working with you, and then bring it back, and then that would be, be next year's around, we'd send it to the, to the state for that change, is that, is that what we-
Well, that would be, that, what we would do, because we're going to end up inheriting the code as is on January 1st, and we can read the language, what the code requirements are for that specific issue, and then we would have to adhere to what the code requirements are, because we are going to, without modification to the code, we will have to wait three years to make another modification, we can't make anything less stringent than the code, and the code is a minimum standard, so we follow, if we follow the code, what we should do actually is look at what the code language says, so we can-
Right.
-decipher what the needs are.
Yeah, that's, yeah, see, basically, let's see how we can make it work, you know, it seems like a pretty sensible thing to be able to-
Yeah, I believe it.
Cut a tree down, you know, I'm surrounded by, you know, giant pines and firs and cedars, and it's just, my whole district is, and, you know, we should be able to use that to build our house.
Right.
Without having to find somebody down in San Jose, or San Joaquin Valley, or, you know, Oregon to come stamp our lumber, so if, you know, we could work together to figure out how to loosen that up, that'd be great.
When the mills were active in this area, there were graders, I think there's some in Sonora, there are local lumber graders available, but I do know the code does require that the lumber be graded in speech, by species and, and structural, is structural capabilities, which is, you know, that's an easy thing for a grader to come out and check it out and see what it is.
Okay, thank you, so maybe when you bring it back, you have a chance to review that?
Sure, it can be-
If you could find some graders that are easy to get and cheap, because, because, I mean, that's the problem, you're adding additional cost to something, and additional burdens to something that should just, you shouldn't be able to use.
Could you check what Amador Mendocino-
Yeah.
Why don't you check out what Amador, I mean, they're changing a lot of their code, I don't know if anybody else knows this, but they have a, I mean, it was, it was a huge change going on over there.
Yeah, I can look into whatever their, whatever they've successfully-
And I think their process of doing this, so, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, yes.
Would it make any difference, say, someone who lives up in, you know, the forested area, if they, I mean, we're talking about need for grade and stamp and whatnot, for somebody who's creating two-by-fours, those type of things like that, to frame a, you know, to do a regular construction frame, you know, type of deal, but what if, would it make a difference if somebody was just making like a log cabin, you know, with the, with the mortar squished in between the logs?
Well, now we're talking about a construction type that requires engineering, so if you're building a log building, then it requires engineering, so you'd have to get a structural engineer, or civil engineer, professional engineer to design that particular type of structure, so log houses, anything with steel in it has to be designed by a professional, design professional.
If somebody got an engineered design, say, and for a log cabin, and they just made a, you know, real world version of a Lincoln log type of thing, where they knocked to the both ends and made a log cabin in the woods or something, I mean, would that be different, because it's not, you know?
That type of construction would be reviewed for engineering, and it would be accepted by a professional design, professional stamp on it that says that this is according to what the standards are, what the-
So in that case, it defaults to the engineering specs, not the wood grade or whatever?
Yeah, that would be part of the process. So again, it's structural, I have to bring this up one more time about the importance of structural material, if you're using different species of lumber, redwood does not, or pine does not compare to Douglas fir, or himfur, or something like that, as far as its structural capability of carrying imposed loads, so the imposed load part of that, and how it's being used, what the spans are, and all the other things that are in the design of the building, there need to be carefully looked at.
Okay, any other questions?
I do, for clarification, when it, when I'm, what I see here is some removal of fines and penalties and addition of, is that part of the new code book, or is that our particular?
Yeah, that's the administrative part of the code that has been in the administrative part of the code for some time, it's also an extrapolation of that, is out of the building code itself for fines and penalties if somebody starts work without permits, we have been maintaining that in the code, I think the language has been altered a little bit, so it's easier to determine certain aspects of the administrative part of that section.
Do they set these penalties, or do we?
We, the penalty, it depends on the, if it's a code compliance issue versus a, somebody building without a permit, the, we are allowed to do what's called an investigation fee, which is basically doubling the fee in the county code, doubling the fee of the building permit part of the fee, not, not the school fees and all the other fees.
If you're referring to 15.04.120, I made those changes to comply with state law. There's a government code provision that sets what those are and when or not in compliance.
Okay, and how about then under Schedule 109.2, when it talks about permit fees, it makes reference to an established fee schedule, so do we have that currently, or are we going to?
The established fee schedule we have is, was done on a MAXMAS study probably five or six years ago, which was adopted by the board, and that's our fee schedule in the permits plus system.
So you're just making reference by changing it to say the established fee schedule?
Yes, the, I think that, if, somewhere in the strikeouts was the, was the part of that language in red, and then it was, it's been maintained, but the, the actual mechanics of the whole thing has not changed, it's, it's still in place, we have not updated our fee schedule for five or six years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I'd like to say thank you to Director White for keeping us up to date on all of our state codes, I know that's something that is difficult for us at times with less than optimal staffing numbers, and, but that seems to be where we get in trouble sometimes, where there's something comes up, a little red flag, and then all of a sudden, the state can come down and say, you're not doing this, 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 so I appreciate you being on top and keeping the board aware of these updates that are required by the state, and making sure that we're in compliance with those, thank you.
Al Segal, did you have any questions or comments? Please, go ahead. Please, go ahead.
House of Counsel, Tax Press Association. Two things. First, we really agree with Chris's comments that even if it would require the, the board to appeal to the state to, to work on some reform of state regulations to allow more flexibility for the counties, it makes sense to do that. Maybe it could be done through CISA with other counties and perhaps Amador may have started that process. So we really recommend doing that, not only in the case of being able to use your own lumber, but also other things that could be very unreasonable and impractical even though they are the law. One of those is I understand there's a new requirement requiring sprinklers in residential homes. And this is very costly, time-consuming and hurtful for, for our home development, for people to build homes. This should be protested by the Board of Supervisors to the state and through whatever needs to be done to get that, to at least get the power for the county to nullify that or not accept that, those sort of regulations that are nonsensical. And perhaps a billing official might help in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rice?
Peter Rice, to add to that point about sprinklers, that's one thing. Adding another meter to a house, that's the kicker, folks. Two meters each house, okay? And they don't talk about a freon like a kitchen, you have a freon, okay? How much is going to do less damage to your house? A bunch of dust or a whole house getting flooded? Okay, that's one thing. The other thing is that that's going to be law regardless if you vote for it or not, correct? What is the advantage, pros and cons of you approve it or don't approve it? That's my question is, this is going to be the law, right? Can you change anything? Can you say, hey, forget it, stick it someplace so the sun don't shine, we don't accept it? Here is something like that, hey, you gotta buy Canadian lumber. I mean, do you have a chance to accept it with certain conditions? And I'm sure your consultant will be able to tell you. Another thing is that that's going to affect your economy quite a bit. Now, I'm sure you all read it all the way through and you know it inside and out, but as far as your constituents goes, they haven't had a chance because it's not posted. They can go down and look at it, but can you see anything that could improve or help to encourage more building in this county? Or you're just going to go along with it because you have to? Nobody can make you vote for it or vote against that, okay? If you like it, you're going to be stuck with it. It's gonna, you know, you are responsible for it. As a constituents, I can't hold Mr. White accountable or any of your, you know, employees accountable, but I can put my two cents into the people I elect. And you better know it inside and out and you can do something or make an effort to take advantage of whatever little power you have to put your two cents into it. I don't trust the state. And I, it's nice to have staff perpetuate their importance, keeping you ignorant and keep the public ignorant. It's a black magic that some of us idiots who get up and read you 800, 900-page things and sees things that's not very welcome. Now, if you all read it, congratulation. You feel comfortable with it, do it. It's going to come back to hearing, so it doesn't have to be voted on. But there's some people, some builders, some contractors might bring something up that should be, take a look at it and should be brought up and see if you can at least give a try. These two meters for the water, folks, there's building, your honor and pay tribute, we're standing up in Jenny Lynn that was done before all the good intentioned engineering was in place. So there's cabins out there, folks, that's still standing without the help of all the building departments. So take a look at it. We did survive. Thank you.
Joe Kelly, three issues were the code's idea. A testing process of inspectors to ensure their degree of understanding of codes for site inspection application, this is important. I'm hearing a whole lot of stuff going through this county and in my district even, or in actually might even be in Mr. Spellman's district, that the inspectors don't fully understand the codes and they'll argue with somebody who does know the standards of the codes. So this needs to be a testing program and an annual type of situation of a revisiting so that they have continuing education. Otherwise, we're doing nothing but going backwards. Two, Mr. White, I'm really surprised that you want to remove trees even though it might be for building somebody's structure. Are you aware of CDF's forester? That anything 49 and east is subject to his approval? If not, you will be fined? So you've got a lot of, you've got a lot of high hills to climb and a lot of trees to go around to be able to get that done. And I believe the forester's jurisdiction supersedes the counties regarding removal of trees legally. So, now, any process of use of onsite trees for habitable construction must meet standards. And the standards should be looking at for the future, sale to another foreclosures, which might then go to somebody who might not be knowledgeable of how that house was built. So maybe we want to tie those type of structures to an APN number so that when it comes into the title company and a report is handed over to a potential purchaser, it said, here's this, and it gives that which allows it to be done. Foreclosures, bank requirements, the banks might be very interested in that to want to be if they have to loan to it. So it has to meet any requirements they might have. And then, and in respects to that, collateralization. All right, thank you.
You can't cut trees down without CDF's approval. I've cut several trees down this year and it's completely legal.
That's really odd.
You can use firewood in.
Okay, use it for firewood. Well, I would have to argue with you on this because I know a contractor that was chased from three, from job to job for about three jobs. He had permits, he had permits to remove the trees. They probably went to firewood, but the forester was chasing him down and was going to fine him severely. So I suggest, you, have you read the ordinances that the forester has? I suggest you do. I have them at home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, if you have somebody that you said that has had a problem with an inspector, then please have them call Mr. White.
I want to respond to that one, thank you. He knows what he's doing. He's been around here for a long time. He's built a lot of stuff in this, in California, the state of, but he is being argued with by one inspector.
Well, you can have him call Mr. White to discuss that. Okay, White, I think you have an idea of some of the issues that might come up during the public hearing. What, are you going to say something?
10 seconds.
10 seconds? All right.
11,002.
Come on.
The Monty Wolf Historic Cabin, Monty Wolf Historic Cabin has been in existence for more than 100 years in our, in our forests in Calabasas County and it never passed any state mandate.
It's in Cali, it's in Alphie.
It's in Alphie, well spoken.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. White, I think the issue is if we decide not to approve it, what is the impact to building in Calabasas County?
Well, first of all, the, the codes are what we inherit every three years. If, if we do absolutely nothing, which I'm not suggesting we do anything with the Building Standards Commission, Building Standards is part of the code, we accept it as we have been in the past. And so we don't have to file any thing that's stricter than the minimum code. That's the only way you can, can go. You can't go less restrictive. You have to go more restrictive based on geographic, climatic conditions and what your local topography is. So, having said that, our codes are designed for California through the California amendment process. They are mandated by state law and the sprinklers came up three years ago in the 2010 code. There was a rebellion unsuccessful as the State Farm Marshal's Office has signed off on that matrix of the code. We have, California has a requirement for residential sprinklers, period, it's not going to go away. We have, Doug Oliver, myself, met with the State Farm Marshal personally on the, on the issue and expressed our concerns regarding the sprinkler part of the code and the purveyors part of the code with water meters and all the stuff that we've been hearing about over and over again. And the State Farm Marshal's Office has taken ownership of this part of the code and this is a requirement. It's just like accessibility is part of the requirement. It's an olus and much, a lot of volumes of all kinds of information. My inspectors are all certified through ICC. They maintain their certifications, they're professionals. My plan checker is also a certified plan checker. He maintains his certification through ICC. Myself have been, I've been certified as a building official. I maintain my certificates and that's what you want in this business is you want certified inspectors and certified leaders to take care of this problem. Everything that is in the code doesn't always apply to every situation. Some of it may say this, but if you, if you're nowhere to look, you'll see that it doesn't apply to certain things. So you've got to know your way around these books, which I think we're pretty, pretty good at as a team. So we do the best we can with a rather complex amount of ordinances, regulations, laws, and it's quite in depth.
So the reality is you have to enforce the 2013 UCB.
That's correct. All the, yeah, all the, all the California codes.
Even if the board chooses.
Yeah, the only thing that we're trying to, and knowing that, the, the minimum codes that we're going to be accepting by default in the first of the year, the only thing that we're proposing in changes is in the amendments of the county code for the administrative part.
And that'll be brought to us separately.
So basically what we're saying is we can't say no, the question isn't whether you're going to say yes or no to accept it. Question is, is it, are, yes, you're going to accept the, the state proposal or no, you're not? And if you're not, that means because, that you're going to develop your own local which is more restrictive.
No.
No.
I thought that's what you said.
No, to have local, more restrictive codes would be the only thing you can do that is not the default of the minimum codes. So if I wanted to say, I'm going to change something in the code, I have to go through the board and through, it has to be done through the elected body and it has to be approved that certain aspects of construction are then justified through the findings to go to the Building Standards Commission to endorse that as Calabasas County Special Code, which will be more restrictive than the current code.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Pretty simple stuff, huh?
There will be a notice public, there will be a notice public hearing on this. So this is amending section of the Uniform Code, adoption by reference to the California Building Standards Code, item 24. So moved. Motion by Supervisor Ponte, second.
Second.
By Supervisor Spellman. All in favor? I oppose. So moved, thank you. You'll schedule the public hearing. Thank you very much. And if you could look at the things that Amador and Mendocino were in relation to what Supervisor White said.
I think he's probably looking for the same, looking for what Amador's exploring.
Yeah, I'll see if I can find something.
Yeah, it was in the last month, they had a, on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to move to item 19, appointment of applicants to the Lynn Park Acres Community Service District and three applicants to the West Point Veterans Memorial District. Ms. Severo, did you have any comments to make on this?
The only ones I have are that the West Point Veterans Memorial District, the board is required to appoint three applicants and there were six applications presented, so that's going to be.
Hey, a lot of good volunteers up in West Point. So if I can make a recommendation that we appoint Peggy Hughes, Richard Hughes, and George McCollum, that would be my, my motion.
And what about the Lynn Park Acres?
There's three of them and so I'll make a motion to accept those guys.
Those two, okay. Any further discussion, any public comments on item 19?
I can tie it in, but I want to just come to the point. Did you folks ever notice that it's always a commission, committee and all that stuff? They never give names, rank and seal number, who is and who is yanking their chain? It's one thing to fight the law, but it's a lot easier, more direct to fight the lawmakers. Because somebody give those powers, it's going to be in Sacramento and so on. But it's always some kind of committee, some kind of group that gives, let's say, the building department. You don't know who made it up. There's some committee, some group.
Are you talking about this item for a day?
No, ma'am, I'll try to follow procedure because I could only speak one and there was an excuse made by the gentleman before me. And that is, I saw you shake your hand. It's a follow-up, okay? Because I'm following your rules. I could not make a second comment, so I'm making it now. When you go along, you always go along with some abbreviations, but you never see the name and rank and seal number, who made that committee or commission or organizations. You never know who you're going to hold accountable. You cannot make appeal in these building codes because that group, professional group, don't like it. Who appointed that? Who's responsible for it? Who are you going to be able to kick out of office? Thank you.
The names of citizen appointments to committees and commission is on the county website. I have a motion by Supervisor White, is there a second? Second by Supervisor Edson, all in favor? I oppose, so moved, thank you. Like to move to item 20.
I had the opportunity to go to an opening of a new line here in, new wine operation here in, in San Andreas, actually, to, apparently I met, I missed Supervisor Edson earlier before I was. I also had an opportunity to go to the Santa's Express fundraising extravaganza over at the fairgrounds and it is quite an operation for those who haven't been there and it's, it really is. And I have to say, I don't know if they get their, their meat from the Calabasas Cabin Association and they save the best cuts for that benefit dinner, but I'm telling you, the steak that night, that Santa's Best Dinner was on the hook. It was delicious, it was so soft and it was, it was great. So, not, not to do any disparage on the pesto pasta that they had there, it was excellent as well, but, I mean, anyway, it was a good time and I saw, you know, huge, huge crates filled with, you know, multiple huge crates filled with presents for needy children and stuff like that. So it made a very good impression for me anyway and it was nice to see how thoughtful the various members of our community are and to see that there were people from, from all areas of the county there participating in that. I mean, the place was perfect. Anyways, I'll leave it at that.
Anything else? No. Mr. Edson?
Just real briefly, attended Child Support Services Commission meeting yesterday in Tuolumne County and I have to say that this is the first time I've actually been in their board chambers and I prefer these board chambers to Tuolumne County's. So we're doing pretty good there. And although they have a really nice administration building, I also attended AARP meeting in West Point. It's like I say, a great group of people up in West Point. It's like I say, a great group of people up in West Point. Had my office hours in Mokeel. I missed one to go to the AARP meeting in West Point and Mountain Ranch. You know, working on, you know, just being out there for people to, you know, be able to come to me in their, in their community easier. I will not be office hours in Thanksgiving in Mountain Ranch this week or on Friday in West Point. They, they could come to my house, but they wouldn't find me there. So they, I also attended a school board meeting in Jenny Lynn and I have to thank the school board for passing a resolution 500 to seek funding for Row Flat School. My hope is that the school board continues to support, not only through that resolution, the Row Flat School, but continue to keep it open indefinitely. It's really become one of the best schools in the county. And so I think it deserves to stay open indefinitely for another hundred and something year. So I was glad to see them stand up in 500 support of the Row Flat School at the last school board meeting. So, thank you to them.
Supervisor Ponte?
Yeah, a couple of things. Supervisor Edson and I were invited to attend a Destination Angels Camp, which is the EDC arm, you might say, of Angels Camp, and heard a presentation on basically economic development for small communities within rural areas. Very interesting. And one of the things that this particular group is doing is purchasing a program to where many businesses would be able to access it to, to look at marketing, marketing their business in a rural community, how to beautify their business, how to retain employees, how to recruit employees, all sorts of things. There's a series of programs. And they are going to be the purchaser of such program and be introducing it at various public functions, whether it be through the Chamber of Commerce or if a Lions Club wanted to have a presentation or a new business coming into town, they're going to work with Job Connection and all sorts of both government and private agencies to be able to showcase this information in education. So I think it's a nice program to have and the one I saw was very, very impressed by the presentation and what I liked most about it, it was very realistic. It wasn't a lot of stuff out there that was hard to get to. I, I found everything that they were presenting was pretty easy and within reach for local communities to obtain. So at some point I did ask if they would come before the board here and make the same sort of presentation to kind of showcase what it is and to see how we can further help businesses help themselves. I attended the Cattlemen's Dinner here a few weeks ago and actually the person who was to be present, to be the guest speaker, wasn't there, but Sheriff Kuntz was there and he introduced two of his deputies that are, have had some specialized training here lately to, to assist landowners in regards to theft on their property and what to look for. And there's a whole identification process that private landowners can go through to identify their personal pieces of property, which then belongs to a much larger, maybe database is, is perhaps the right word, if, if something should be found later on instead of maybe some people put their personal ID on there. A driver's license has been habitual in this day and age. They don't want you to do that because of identity theft. So there's, there's an organization that is, supplies a database. So there's a special code that can be given to private landowners. So I, I found that very interesting and perhaps we can hear more about that at this level too, because I think that would be beneficial to people overall. Enjoyed the court's open house and I thought it was a very nice presentation. I was amazed at the technology available in the courts and it was kind of eerie to be video graphed and, and seen on all these screens and monitors and that sort of thing, but I thought the staff did a very nice job in, in the open house and thoroughly enjoyed it. I met with the representative in McClintock's office and I, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name offhand.
Kimberly.
It was Kimberly, thank you. And so I continued to, to talk with that office and at the federal level, looking for funds to help the Stallion Way Project in regards to the roads out to the towers and so forth. So haven't been successful in finding anything, but certainly opened up some doors and one of those doors is through the USDA office. And while there's not any grants available at this point, there is some funding opportunities for loans that might be a possibility for this group to take a look at. But my next step is meeting with folks from the Fire Safe Council and CDU and such and see if we can find any funds there to, to support that cause. There is a meeting set up here soon to meet with the property owners out there and take a look at how they can recoup some of their, their costs related to the construction that they've been doing on the towers out in that area. Have the opportunity to host, and this is on a more personal nature, but Foothill Village opened up a new unit, a memory care unit for, for folks who are advanced ages of memory. It's a secured unit. We had an open house that was well-attended here last week and supporting the economy as, as Peter supported. We have eight new employees that have been added to the payroll and so hopefully we're doing our part to create jobs and, and support our senior citizens. And with that, we're hosting the Christmas holiday party, you might say, for Area 12 in a couple of weeks and supporting that volunteer group of people. And lastly, we hosted a Veterans Day event at Foothill in regards to a dinner and the VA Post down in Copperopolis was very gracious, working with the Sierra Angels Car Show and they put about a half a dozen seniors in their old cars, you might say, old cars are like brand new looking, and rode in the parade. And that was a, a very nice event for Copperopolis and very well-attended. I think I may have reported that earlier, but I just have to give note to that local VA, VFW in Copperopolis and the people there are really rocking and rolling and doing a lot for our veterans. That's all I have.
Mr. Edson?
So I also attended, as Debbie said, the Angels EDC and I really liked their presentation that they had. And it was, it was kind of a small part of, of what I think, you know, we could benefit from here in Calaveras County, but it was also very detailed and I would like to see all of the, you know, as I asked Debbie for a copy of that, because I'd like to see the, the EDC that we have here and the business associations take a look at it because it could give somebody an idea of, of how we could move forward some, some instances. It was a very good presentation. So on the 13th, I went to our EDC meeting here in Calaveras County and Laurie Norton attended, Sheriff Kuntz attended and Marty, who's always there. And of course, there's Dave out here, Dave Jeffords out here, he's the sheriff person for that. And had a pretty good crowd, so it's, it's starting to, I think, move forward and it's resurrecting and thanks to in large part, Dave Jeffords for, for helping with that. That evening I went to Cog, forgot that one. So Debbie and I were at Cog. And then on the 14th, I went to a chamber mixer at the Windham Worldwide. It was in Angels Camp. Great place. A lot of, a lot of, a lot of nice folks there and so Mindy.
Boyet.
Hmm?
Boyet.
Yeah, so she's our new chamber person and she's in charge, she's the interim executive director and she put this together. Great job. On the 18th, I went to the courthouse dedication and I was lucky enough to, to get a tour from, from somebody there and I got to see the judge's, the judge's chambers. Yeah, what county is that in? Yeah, you know, when I was there, I didn't know where I was at. So, but it's a really beautiful building and I think it's, it's built, it's pretty well-built. It looks like it might, may last for quite a while. Since we have cement, cement walls, you know, when you go in there, but they're decorated so that, so you feel like you're in a, in a really nice place. I think it's going to be real functional for the court system. But I got to tell you and Chris just commented on that, it doesn't feel like you're in San Andreas or even Calaveras County for that matter. It is pretty high, pretty nice building. So on the 20th, I went to the Valley Springs Area Business Association Luncheon and it was at, it was at the Rancho, yeah, Rancho Clubhouse. Great little meal they put on for them and the, the subject matter was about, yeah, about hospice. And so, you know, a lot of people don't think about departure or succession until the family has to do it for them. And we had a pretty good, that guy, he, the, the person that was presenting it was pretty straightforward and, and, you know, he, he, you heard it from him and it was like hearing it from nobody else you ever talked to. So I had personal experience with hospice when my dad passed away and I, I thought that they, they were the greatest group that I ever encountered because of the way they treated myself, my dad and my family. Foothill Parks, I had, that evening I had a meeting with Foothill Parks and Recreation and I don't know if anybody's heard of Foothill Parks and Recreation, but they are a actual nonprofit organization down in Valley Springs. They've been in existence for about five or seven years, somewhere around there, and they're trying to resurrect that because eventually there's a push towards more recreation opportunities for the, the community in, for Rancho and Valley Springs area. And so there's an opportunity for people to get involved in that and hopefully they'll be able to do that. On the December 7th, the, there's going to be a Christmas parade in Valley Springs and Foothill Parks and Recreation will be there with yellow buttons to identify them, handouts and trying to promote people to, to get involved. On the 21st, I went to talk to Mark Campbell and Trina Steck went with me. We're involved in the after-school program here in San Andreas that's been announced that's going to close on December 20th and I happen to think that after-school programs are pretty darn important for communities and for, for parents in communities. So what, what I'm trying to do and what Trina's trying to do and a whole bunch of parents, by the way, is trying to figure out a way to keep the program, but in, maybe in a different light or a different way of operating, more of a public partner, a public-private partner relationship. And so we're all working on that. Hopefully we're going to have a good, a good outcome. Don't know yet, but I'm optimistic about that. On the 22nd, I, I met with the owners of the Colombo Building here in San Andreas and basically they wanted to give me a tour of the building. I took a tour of the building. Nice building. And so I, I had an opportunity to express how I envision my efforts on, on, around downtown San Andreas and hopefully they'll be able to help out with that. On Friday, Marty called me and Marty Crane called me and said, hey, come to Subway, we have a sink. So Subway has to, I don't know if people know this, every seven years Subway has to remodel their stores, doesn't matter where you are. Up here it's really tough on people, you know, because they don't have the, the volume. But so there was a really nice sink that Marty was able to get ahold of, thanks to the Subway owner who donated it. He doesn't know quite how where it's going to be donated to yet, but it's sitting in my backyard on, on my trailer. And so the, the goal is either to, either to see if the Veterans Hall can use it in Valley Springs or if not, then I'll probably take it down to Stockton and have it sold and the money could then go to the Valley Springs Youth Center. Just wanted to also say that, reiterate that on December 7th, there's going to be a Christmas parade in Valley Springs, starts at 8:00 AM. There's also going to be a Christmas tree lighting, right? And that's at the, at the terrace in, in Valley Springs. Okay? So I'll be at both of those and then at the same time that evening, that evening on December 7th, it's going to be the DSA Christmas Dinner and that's going to be at Armstrong. That's all I have.
I want to thank, yeah, what? Oh, my turn? Are you telling me that?
Yeah, you, you go after we all go, but I remembered one little thing.
Got it.
Unless you want me to go after that.
No, no, no. How many seconds do you want?
Probably 20.
Huh?
Probably 20.
All right.
Just go for like 20 minutes, I'll step out.
This one's especially for my favorite constituent, Peter, who always attends these meetings. I took the opportunity to go to San Jose to the CSAT Conference and specifically for the Housing Landings and Transportation Committee, which I am a member of. There was a gentleman who is a 40-year veteran of the state and he was advocating for additional gas tax, I believe, wasn't it? Or something to, to help fund our crumbling roads and services. And I took the opportunity in front of people assembled all throughout the state, various appointees and elected people, to remind him that during the Schwarzenegger administration, they stole money from the Highway Repair and Construction Fund to pay for HR expenses for the California Air Resource Board, which was illegal. And that I didn't feel that people weren't, he, he couched it that people need to pay for what they want. And I said, excuse me, sir. I think people are willing to pay for what they want. But the problem is, when they agree to pay for what they want, then you take the money and spend it on other things. So just like you to be aware of that.
In your behalf.
That was Will Temper, the former head of the Cal, Calpats.
Yeah. He didn't answer and he didn't make any comment.
I want to thank Supervisor Ponte for bringing Ted Laskin along time, attorney here in the county, who co-wrote the book on the judges of Calaveras County, for taking them to the court opening. I think that was really appreciated. Thank you. We're entering year three of Assembly Bill 109 at the Realignment Committee, which all the counties are pretty much except Alpine, I think, grousing about how much money we received. There's three rural, three urban and three suburban county supervisors that are going to recommend a methodology distributing the AB 109 funds. This is mostly sales tax money and it's really, it'll probably be a report card. There was already a report card kind of put out by Stanford and Calaveras didn't bode well in that, but I think how the funding will be allocated, some of it will be based on growth and some will be base funding. There's also the discussion, this is at the Administration of Justice Policy Committee that I serve on, about fire camps with AB 109, people who are in our, fire camps now will probably be released because they're low-level offenders. The cost to incarcerate, incarcerate, that might not be the right word, to put people who are low-level offenders into the fire camps is a little high for counties since we'll be, we will have the people in our jails that would normally be, that would be eligible for a fire camp. They're looking at a two-tiered system of funding, possibly for training, because those are fixed costs for Cal Fire, maybe be $46 a day and then drop down to $10 a day once they are trained. We also discussed a presentation by the Boys and Girls Club Partnership in Sonoma County for the city and county and the, what they're doing to take the juveniles that are incarcerated and. And that's sort of something, maybe we can work with Tooluma County, since they're going to be building the juvenile facility. The California State Association of Counties and the Rural County Representatives of California are putting their working group together again on the Williamson Act. This county, to its credit, has continued to support Williamson Act contracts, though we might not have very many, but we're not canceling contracts and trying to find ways to possibly introduce legislation so we can start getting some funding for Williamson Act contracts. The hot topic was the constitutional amendment.
I was talking there, what committee was that?
CSAT and RCRC, and it's a working committee.
Are you on that?
No.
Who's the conflict?
I don't know, it's pretty much that for the moment, but I'll get that, too. It is the Constitutional Amendment Three, which would enshrine the Public Records Act and the Brown Act and the Constitution. We support that as counties, because we're doing it, but we are not getting our mandated reimbursements, which is over just $120 million statewide for just the Brown Act alone. The Constitution, the California Constitution, requires the state to reimburse us for mandates for any new program or higher level of service. This was the Public Records Act and the Brown Act, where state mandates, none of us are receiving any money. So, generally, open government is more important than money, even though it does cost the taxpayers of Calaveras County for us to institute the Brown Act and the Public Records Act. The other sort of sad item is the SRA fees, which I'm sure all of you are aware. There'll be a fee adjustment, it's going to go up $2.33. So, for most everybody in Calaveras County, that instead of being $115, will be paying There is new legislation proposed in January, we're not holding our breath, but aimed at repealing the SRA fees. And of course, it's still in court in litigation. So, I'm not sure, trying to be cool, 21st century here.
You can just list that, but...
Yeah. On the 6th, there's the traditional First Friday in Murphy's. The streets close downtown, whether it's raining, snowing, or warm. It's open, and those of you who are on the Bret Hart side of the hill, Jan Schulz, a former teacher, Bret Hart, and I think he was a wrestling coach, roast chestnuts on an open fire. That sounds like a good country song, so. And I will be at a Lillife Park Homeowners Association event the night of the 7th, Greater Arnold Business Association. And had the opportunity to hear Camila Harris when I was at the CSAT Conference. And I have to say, she just is really bright, articulate. She taught, she put the emphasis on education, that you can't, recidivism will stop occurring when we start educating our kids. And the attorney, excuse me, the district attorney in Alameda County also taught on that same topic, that if we don't teach our children how to read, starting like in kindergarten up through getting into third grade, those of the kids that seem to go into Jubilee Hall or wind up in jail are in our criminal justice system. It was nice to hear the importance of that, and that leaders in criminal justice are understanding what it is that we have to do as a community. That's it.
Like after school program?
Yeah.
You did not say that. You did not say that.
Just, just very briefly, I now understand that in addition to the courts taking the Wi-Fi system, they also took the broader audio system, so departments have not been able to hear this meeting this morning. So, between now and December 10th, which is the next date we will be meeting in this room, we will be working with ISD to try to rectify that situation.
Wait a minute, they took that? What are they taking it for? They have a whole new 60-some-million-dollar building.
Well, if it's theirs, they, you know, of course, need it.
I'm not sure, but we will try to rectify the situation before our next meeting in this room.
I didn't think we'd have to watch them as they walked out the back door, but I guess...
So, we don't, December 3rd, I thought we were having a...
It's not in this, in this room, it's at the library.
So, okay.
Yeah. The next meeting in this room is December 10th.
So, December 3rd is the...
Is a special workshop, no action being taken, just a discussion of board priorities and...
9 o'clock, I guess.
No, Diane, 1 o'clock start.
I have nothing.
I attended the CSAT Conference last week, and have been appointed to serve as the Region Two Chair for the North Cliffs Association, and I'm going to continue to serve on the Association's investigation meeting for the next year.
Congratulations, and thank you for helping me out there.
Can you say that?
I would have been sleeping in the party. Okay. I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and we will be at the San Andreas Bowl Park, yes.
Point of order, please, since this is an agenda item.
Yes.
Is it subject to agenda comment?
Yes, Mr. Kelly, please, go ahead.
Thank you. I wish you would start saying, requesting comment. I would offer that the last meeting of the year, and it should be put on all last meetings from this year on, that the agenda item be used by you folks to express what you have done to increase positively the economic conditions for the county, property owners, taxpayers, and renters throughout the economic status, so we know what positively you have done. Secondly, a report on those of you, you individuals, you elected officials, to, on your reading and comprehension of the statutes, county code statutes. It would be nice to know that you folks understand what you're adopting, what you're putting into play, what's in play that you might be enforcing. Because I don't get that feeling, I have not for a long time. And I understand we have, well, I do understand, we have a very competent county council, which I do appreciate, believe it or not. But I want to know that I can have confidence in you folks, so that you're not running to a department head to find out something when it's in the codes and you can look it up. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Since you talked about education, does the board discuss, I mean, I'm sure you would have discussed it among yourself, something called Common Core? Are you familiar with the education system? But it would be, because you all, I think what was expressed, I agree with, is pathetic. The other thing is that maybe it would be nice to get an update, but that is what you should think, I believe, that the Superior Court will be some ruling as far as the financing and the procedure, proceeding, that you should train, which is that one.
They're routing it up here now. They're going to route it to Calaveras.
Sure, hey, you got fool, you got fool, I know. And just a little suggestion about Williamson and stuff like that, and it came to my mind that you're talking about the building codes. We already have some ag consultants here under Mr. Moss. Building code, gray water. What this county could use, the gray water on individual gardening, and what could be agricultural opportunities? I know we have tremendous amount of opportunities for wine, we have tremendous opportunities for goats, and I'm sure in the Middle East, a lot of people would like to have some of those goat meat. But anyway, just should you train, Common Core, and opportunities for small farming. So, thank you.
If this meeting is adjourned, then we will meet at San Andreas Park and by more direct supply.